Five fifteen, I'll call this meeting to order, please stand for the flag of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, welcome everybody. We shall have roll call, please.
Congressman Crails?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gellikson?
Mayor Waller's?
Yes. Once again, we shall start with Mayor Waller's quote for the day. I selected this quote by Mark Twain because I thought it applies to all of us tonight as we look at some of the things that we have to make decisions on. Twenty years from now, you will be more disappointed by the things that you didn't do than by the ones that you did do. Think about that. Okay. We have a rather full plate tonight, so we shall begin. Once again, we'll start out with citizens' comments. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak, now would be that time. Seeing none, we will move on. We have no public hearings. Oh, I'm sorry, I gotta back up. We need a motion to approve the agenda, sorry. Got ahead of my skis there. If everybody'd like to look at the agenda and anything they'd like to add or whatever, now would be the time, otherwise we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I will second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Now we can march on. Again, we have no public hearings. We shall move on to reading and approval of the regular meeting minutes from December twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll move approval of the regular meeting minutes from December twelfth.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and second to approve the December twelfth regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And then we have the condensed version of the December twelfth meeting minutes.
I will move approval of the condensed minutes. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the December twelfth condensed version of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next up would be our consent agenda, which consists of the audit of city bills, I guess. Rather short consent agenda tonight. We'll make up for it in resolutions, right? Any discussion on any, on the consent agenda item? Rather short dollar amount, I see was only seventy-two thousand? That's probably the, I suppose just because of the time, short, shortness in time between meetings, but we'll enjoy that one. It's not often you see them under a hundred thousand.
Did you make, did somebody make a motion for that already?
No.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Okay.
I will second.
All right, motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, we'll get right into it. We have several resolutions tonight. First up is a resolution increasing sewer and water utility rates for twenty twenty-four. And Becca, if you would like to interject or add anything to what we've already discussed, now would be a good time.
Yeah, so we talked about a couple different options last time. You got some information on Alberta. Thoughts are maybe just to hold off on raising them up until we have some conversations with, with their city, but going up that same percentage as we are. And then the sewer flat rate, that, I think I kind of shared that with you. There's about twenty people working at that facility estimating fifty gallons per person per day, which would then be about a hundred and ninety-six dollars per billion cycle. So going from the fifty-seventy to the one ninety-six.
Any questions for the city manager on that? I think it's pretty straightforward. I appreciate you clarifying a couple of those things.
Yeah, I, I think it is too. I, I just think that I had discussions with people about it and they're pretty unaware of how, excuse me, how high the input costs had driven up since two thousand and twenty, or since we put it up. I said, you know, it says it's gone up three hundred percent, you know, they're like, what? You know, so I think that people do understand that these things, all these stuff has really gotten expensive and it's just time that we gotta get it up to where we can recoup it and keep it, so that we can keep it in good maintenance out there too, so.
I agree with it, so I'll make the motion for the resol- adopting the resolution increasing sewer and water utility rates for two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, I mean, nothing is, nothing is getting cheaper, nothing, we're at a point in our country where nothing really will, right? And so with that in mind, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, and I guess I'd just like to add a comment. I know we all had the opportunity to tour the water treatment plant and you know, when you see the finished product and all the work that went into that plant, it just makes you feel that much better about, you know, paying that bill. Because I think everybody in this community should be really thankful that we have a, a brand new plant and we have good, good quality water, so. Okay, we have a first and a second on that resolution. We'll have roll call vote on that, please.
Congressman Salvi?
Yes.
Crails?
Yes.
Gellikson?
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Waller's?
Yes. Next up is a resolution renewing the Winstead Engineering Services Agreement for twenty twenty-four. I think we've had a pretty good working relationship with Winstead over the years and I know the city manager's recommending that we should pass this resolution and I see no reason why we would do anything different.
I will move on a resolution renewing the Winstead Engineering Services Agreement for twenty twenty-four. I agree and I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll have roll call, roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Congressman Miller?
Yes.
Gellikson? Crails?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Mayor Waller's?
Yes. Next up is a resolution approving a consulting agreement with Madden Glanter Hansen LLP, Attorneys at Law.
This is really just for services during the union negotiations?
Yep, and then she's working on a different case that started prior, so using her for that too. But yeah, she'll be working with us as we go through, finish our negotiations.
Is, is this stuff that our city attorney can't do?
The one part of it is more of an employment attorney, you'd want an employment attorney. The union negotiations, he possibly could. Sometimes it's nice to have someone who specializes in the employment law area with, with some of that.
Basically, both of them are about employment law, really?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I understand.
Well, I think employment law, you know, if you're an employer, I think, yeah, also it's something you really need to stay on top of and I think it makes sense to have somebody else can oversee in that process, so I think it's a good idea. Any other discussion on that resolution? Otherwise, we'll entertain a couple of motions.
I think it's pretty straightforward, and I will make a motion to approve the resolution approving a consulting agreement with Madden Glanter Hansen LLP, Attorneys at Law.
Yeah, I mean, law is very specialized. It just, by the nature of what it is, it is, right? And this is, this is a good thing for, for us, so I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and once again, we'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Congressman Gellikson? Miller?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Crails?
Yes.
Mayor Waller's?
Yes. Okay. Next before us is a resolution setting the annual benefit amount for the Morris Fire Relief Association. It looks like we're kind of keeping pace with what we've done in the past, at fifty dollars a year is kind of what you're proposing here, so. Makes sense to me.
I will move on the resolution setting the annual benefit amount for the Morris Fire Department Relief Association firefighters at twenty-four hundred dollars per year, starting January one of twenty twenty-four. Which would be a fifty dollar per year of service increase over where they're currently at. And this is based off of their investments and the state aid money, which requires no contribution from the city at this time to, to make that jump, so.
I'll second.
Okay. And we'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Congressman Crails?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gellikson? Mayor Waller's?
Yes. Okay. Next before us is a resolution appointing officers of the Morris Fire Department for twenty twenty-four.
This one is pretty straightforward and I spoke with a couple of, I worked with a couple of firefighters in my regular nine-to-five and so you know, having, having conversations with them, they're very comfortable with, with this as well. So with that, I will make a motion to approve the resolution appointing officers of the Morris Fire Department for twenty twenty-four.
I will second that, and yes, we're very fortunate to have people willing to step forward and be part of the leadership team down there to do the many things that are required by the local volunteer fire department.
Yeah, no, I, I feel the same. Okay, we have, any more discussion on that? Otherwise, we have a first and a second. We can have a roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Congressman Miller?
Yes.
Gellikson? Crails?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Mayor Waller's?
Yes. All right. We're getting there. Resolution approving the final twenty twenty-three tax levy for collection in twenty twenty-four. And once again, Becca, if you wanted to say anything, I guess, on the final?
Yeah, so the tax levy has not increased. We didn't, we were going up the three and a half percent at the preliminary. We didn't go down any. We're keeping it at the three and a half percent for the levy. If you want me to go through the budget stuff too?
You can.
Do that at the same time, yeah.
Probably as good a time as any.
Yeah, so budget-wise, we're pretty similar to what we were with the preliminary budget. Couple different things with, that changed around. We changed around some salary items due to staff changes. Changed around some money in the library, added a little bit for some maintenance, so then we did end up going a little higher on their capital for their carpeting in the capital outlay. The water fund is probably where you see the biggest increase from the preliminary because we accounted for those extra expenses and then the revenues. So that is probably your biggest change from the preliminary budget that you saw. And then the only other thing we've added with the capital outlay budget is a handicap swing. Jeff has been really good at trying to get some donation dollars for that, so putting, we're putting some dollars ourselves for that also. So that's new to the capital outlay from the preliminary budget.
And I love that something like that makes it for the inclusive nature of what it is, right? If we're trying to be supportive of all able-bodied children, right? Like, that's, that's super important. I really like that the parks department is doing that, yeah.
The, the clubs, a few other businesses or groups, organizations in town have been awesome. So between what we have to put in, and I've contacted like five, six of the local different organizations and they've all been very good.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think we've, we've spent a fair amount of time with this as a group and I guess I certainly don't have any questions. If anybody else has anything? Nothing? Okay. Well, let's vote on the first one, which is the tax levy. We'll need a first and a second on that, and then we can have a vote.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution approving the final twenty twenty-three tax levy for collection in twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second. We'll have roll call vote on that, please.
Congressman Crails?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gellikson? Mayor Waller's?
Yes. And the last but not least is a resolution adopting the final twenty twenty-four budget for the city of Morris. And I think we just kind of had our discussion and if no one has any further questions, we can, I'll entertain a first and a second on that.
I'll move approval of a resolution adopting the final twenty twenty-four budget for the city of Morris.
I can second that. Now we'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Congressman Salvi?
Yes.
Crails?
Yes.
Gellikson? Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Waller's?
Yes. Okay, city manager's newsletter.
Yes, it's a little short this time. Working on union negotiations. We'll meet with the unions beginning of next year. I have all the bylaws minus the library board because they kind of have their own set of things together for you guys to look at. Done and guidelines prepared for the boards and commissions, so they went to the city attorney just because bylaws can be sticky and tricky and have him just make sure they, they look okay and then those will become to the meeting in January. The tourism board went out on Sunday, took pictures a couple different places for some of our winter, even though it's not really wintery. But we really wanted to get some of the lights at the Prairie, Lights on the Prairie event, so came into that. In January, I will have our work session and at one of those first meetings, we'll have a closed session at the end of those for, for a six-month review. And then at the end of next week, or not end of next week, sometime next week, we'll be getting our public safety funds. So we'll have a discussion in our January meetings about kind of where we foresee us using those, those funds. I know we talked about some backup for the sirens and then some funding for some of the body cam police equipment for, for the county, so some of those, we'll just have some discussions on here in January. When we get the monies, so.
Well, I just wanted to give a shout out to you and your staff. I know this week was pretty challenging for you. You had a lot on your plate and I, I think you all should be giving yourselves a pat on the back because I think there was a lot of things you had to pull together in a short amount of time, so thank you for that. Any questions for our city manager on her newsletter? Okay. Thank you for that. Other business, we should probably have a discussion on the Seventh Street project. Yeah, we've been kind of hammering through this thing for about the last year and a half, two years. We're getting kind of at the bewitching hour where we're gonna have to make some sort of a decision. Which kind of leads me back to that quote that we, I started out with, but you know, sometimes, you know, twenty years come by and you kind of look back and if the people that were sitting in these seats twenty years ago would have made a little bit better decision, I think, in how they developed that in the first place, we wouldn't be faced with such a mountain right now. So nonetheless, that being said, we have before us a project that we all know, I think, needs to be done, but trying to wave the magic wand and come up with the magic formula, that's, that's the other challenge, of course. Would you like to speak any to this at all?
Well, I, yep, so I sent everyone out kind of information and not working the computer very well, so I'll just kind of go through it. So just to recap, got surveys back, got fifty-one surveys because we got one today, so thirty-one, thirty-two of them are not in favor of the project, putting water sewer in. Looking at cost-wise, to do the road, we would have funding available. So the road cost is about three point four million. We have about, we have one point six million in federal grants that we have to use by twenty twenty-five. We have some state aid fund balance, state aid advance money. So possibly around about a three point nine million in funds available for the road. So the rest of the project, we're gonna have to look at, if you decide to go that way, how is it gonna work in conjunction with the road? Because we, there's a lot of moving parts in order to get that project going. Obviously, there are great things. We want to have water sewer in all locations in the city, but there are some, some negatives, so the cost to the community as a whole is, is something to consider. Putting projects, so this is a project that we've been trying to see a feasibility study for, to do on the west side of town. The pipes over there are possibly around seventy years old. There's some cast iron water pipes. In some of the areas, the, the sewer is, is low and shallow, so trying to get it to flow somewhere else. So some of these projects are gonna have to go on hold if we decide to put water and sewer in an area where a lot of people who have commented on the survey don't want it. We do have an ordinance that does say if they are within two hundred feet of the main, they have to hook up. But the council can if they petition the council to not hook up to, to city water sewer, the council can allow that if it, if there's good cause. And to me, if they have a working system, would, would that constitute as good cause? So that's, that's some areas to think about in order to move forward with the road and get that done and, and with the project at the last, putting like the water sewer in, the last meeting, Jeff had mentioned that if we need to move forward with, with the design of the road and everything and, and all the pipes, we're kind of a little late to the game if we want to use this one point six million dollars for the road. So we can switch it over. I know, I know you guys have talked about pushing it onto a different state aid road, but we'd still have to maintain the road on Seventh Street, which would take most of our funds for the next few years and we'd still have to look at doing a whole reconstruct of the road in probably about three years. So taking the funds from that road doesn't seem like the best option. So my recommendation is to move forward with the road project on Seventh Street and to wait on water and sewer. I know Jeff, Russ and Ryan and I have talked, you know, there could be a possibility of going down the boulevards. There could be a possibility of boring in the future. But if people don't want it right now, you know, we, we can say, we can assess, but I've already heard from, from one that for sure we'll be fighting the assessment. And the cost, I, if you feel like we're trying to go about it backwards, instead of having all our financing and everything ready, we're just gonna say, yep, we want to move forward with the project, we're not, we're just gonna kind of piecemeal how we get there. So. That would be my recommendation is to move forward with the road.
And off of the numbers, yeah, we're at about sixty percent that don't want to get it done. The dollar cost, which if the majority of them have working systems. Jeff, the possibility, if we do the road now, to doing the water sewer in the right of ways, I mean, to not do it underneath the road, I mean, that's an option, correct?
It is, it is possible to do it. It does make the design a little bit more challenging, but it's still impossible to do. I would, given the situation, I think you should move forward without trying to put it underneath the roadway at this time. If, in fact, as we move closer to actual construction of the roadway and we cross some other hurdles and we want to potentially rethink that a little bit, me, but I think right now, let's focus on getting the road done. I think there's too many people that really aren't for this. We've got other needs. Let's figure out the finances before we are too late and miss out on the road opportunity.
And as Becca just said, our hands will be tied going forward not to be able to do other potential projects if we have issues elsewhere in our community, so I, I think it makes sense for us to move forward with the street and with the possibility of possibly adding some of the, the works under the road, down the road before we get it done, but I think to go forward on the Seventh Street, which needs to get done in the next three years, so I think that's, that's pretty much common sense, says that's the route we need to go.
I had, I just kind of crunched some numbers myself today and I just wanted to just throw this, throw it out there before the council, just to kind of think about this for a second. And I guess what's driving my thoughts is, you know, that if we make a decision now to not do it, we're pretty much pushing this down the road for the next people that are gonna be sitting in these chairs to deal with it, so. I looked at, if you look at your report that Becca gave us, the phase three, just doing phase one, two and three. If you look at the cost of that project, that portion of it is six million, five hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred and eighteen. Okay, then you take the one point six federal grant dollars that we have, add that, the amount of the advance money that Jeff says is available at one point, well, it'd be one million, two hundred and fifty thousand. You add those two numbers together, you come up with two million, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you could take off of that phase three cost. That leaves you with a number that, that would be assessed at three million, six sixty-nine, two eighteen. And that can be assessed then right at twenty percent. Is that right, Becca? Am I thinking about that right?
You know, I haven't looked at the ordinance on what, what you can assess that, but I, I would assume that's probably.
It's up to twenty percent, isn't it, of that total, whatever that project cost total is, twenty percent of the?
You, you, you can assess up to whatever the value that it increases the property, but if you, if it's in there that it says it's twenty percent, that doesn't necessarily mean you can get to that number. And that's, that's the dispute that we're gonna get as we go for, if we go forward with that because and, and there was like sixty percent of them didn't want it, right? And, and I noticed on there, there was quite a few businesses and other ones, and there was other ones, if you would just, you know, segregate out businesses and just go personal, it gets a lot higher than sixty percent. So, and you're gonna get, you know, what are you gonna be, fifty thousand is what we're, somewhere ballpark estimating that that's going to, we're going to assess you, and so somebody's gotta come in and say, okay, your house now, because we've given you water and sewer, your house is worth fifty thousand dollars more.
Well, what I, what I came up with is at that twenty percent level, you take twenty percent of three million, six sixty-nine, two eighteen, that comes up to be seven hundred and thirty, or seven hundred and, yeah, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight forty-three. Well, you divide that by the thirty-six, because there's, if you look at phase one, two and three, there's thirty-six properties that would be involved in that. That would be spread out over those thirty-six, so you take that number, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, let's say divided by thirty-six, that comes up to be roughly twenty thousand dollars assessment. Now, I know that I'm not, I mean, don't hold me to those numbers, but that's just kind of the way I was looking at this and I don't know you know, you could accomplish a lot, because then down the road farther, you know, then you're sitting, basically you, you could say that we're half done. And then down the road, somebody's gonna have to come and pick up. And then down the road, somebody's going to have to come and pick up, pay four, five and six.
No.
At least then we'd have the lift station portion of it done and I don't know, Jeff, is, am I thinking right or am I not thinking right?
I got to double check some of the numbers, so um, the state aid and federal aid dollars, you can only use it on seventh street. That's your state aid.
Yep.
Okay. So when that project total cost that you threw out, um, and using the full state aid portion, we can only use it on what's state aid eligible, which would be the road portion, not any of the utility stuff, it wouldn't be eligible.
Okay.
Okay? So if you look at it from that standpoint, that three point four million road cost, yes, that's kind of covered. All the other utilities would have to kind of be financed independent from that.
You'd have to bond for it.
Yeah, and that twenty percent number that you're thinking about maybe is uh, when you do bond.
Yep.
Certain bonds require a minimum of twenty percent to be assessed.
Yep.
Per the bond requirement. It's not so much the.
Yep.
Like you said, you can assess whatever amount you want as far as, as long as you can approve benefit, which is the key challenge.
And how does um, general obligation utility revenue bonds work? I mean, that would be another vehicle we could pursue, but.
Potentially. I'm not a financial consultant, so I don't want to weigh too far into this. I'm not, I'm not that person.
I guess that's, you pledge future revenues from your, if I understand a little bit about it, you you pledge future uh, revenue from your. Projected increase to the utilities that's going to bring to that project. You could pledge that against and then maybe leverage some money that way to to make it doable, but. You know, again, I'm not a finance guy much like, you know.
To.
Just something to think about.
To a couple of points that we've made, though, and and you were looking at the advance in your numbers.
Yep.
If we were to do that to Becca's point, then we're hamstringing ourselves on everything else. Right, because because we won't have that then for the potential west side stuff.
Okay.
Right, so that's for the next X amount of years then. We just don't have that money. Exactly, right? So so there's that part of it too, right? And 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 to your point, it feels very much like I'm I'm glad we went through the exercise and I'm glad that we spent the time and and got actual feedback.
Yep.
Right, I'm very, I'm very glad that we did that. But to your point, it feels like we're kind of piecemealing it. Like, we want to do the project, but we don't have the funds.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent. I'd love to be able to say, we're going to do this now and in five years, we're going to do the next phase and in ten years, we're going to do the next phase. But also at this, at even at your numbers, it's going to bring it up to their curb. They still have to go from their curb onto their property and I'm sure all of them go around the back of the house. So that's not going to be a real cheap project to get that dug in, so the assessment plus what it's going to cost them out of pocket and then to start paying their bi-monthly. Water and sewer bills that they're not paying.
And on top of that then, and on top of that then, we're increasing the, we just increased rates tonight, we're increasing the rates double or triple for the rest of the city. In order to help generate some of that revenue back.
That's very much the point is you really need to find out where you're at financially. Um. This option of doing the road now, putting utilities outside the road, gives you a little more time to figure that out. Again, it's not ideal, but. We don't live in an ideal world. We have to move forward with what circumstance that we have today.
Yeah.
That's probably our best of those options right now. Move, move the road project forward. We'll try to figure out if we can financially keep the city solvent and moving forward and still try to extend the utilities if needed. Right now, you don't have a high enough need. My opinion, you've got quite a few people that are going to be fighting you. Um, we will try to plan for some of these strategic crossings, maybe just putting one single pipe. Uh, at some of the intersections, so that when I go, I'm going to probably put the sewer on on the north side of the road. That's the majority of where things are going to develop, but there's a few streets that are on the south side. I can put a few crossings in. So that when I go down that north side boulevard with that, I've got those put in underneath the ground. Or we can directionally forward those at a later date. So I've got some options for the city to kind of keep that possibility still open. It's just, it's not as straightforward as if you were to just do it all at one time, but.
Yep, yeah, you just kind of, you look at it a little bit from a sustainability uh, perspective and, you know, I know these people are going to, there's several of them out there that are faced with failing septics and. They're not, you know, their choices are going to be somewhat limited between now and the next time this project gets revisited, so, but I'm not sure what this council can do about that.
I agree.
So.
We're a long ways away from where when it got annexed in to when they wanted it to having, I think, seventy-five percent of the neighborhood or the people wanting to do it. I think we're, we're a long ways from that right now where we're at.
Yeah. Those good discussions to have, you know, I I just thought I'd throw it out there, but. Yeah.
Is this something that we are going to bring to our next meeting in resolution matter?
Uh-huh.
You asked for a decision by the first some, first probably week in January, one way or the other, right?
Yes.
So I mean, we don't have to make a decision tonight, but I mean.
Well, I mean, I think it's pretty straightforward to to do the road with the funds that we have. Uh, that's, that's always going to be there. Um, and and it'd be terrible if we, if we didn't get the funds that were allocated for that and then. Also, we do have other needs and other people in the city to consider too, that, you know, are in the city and are getting those services, so. You know, we need to work on some of that stuff on these projects on the other side of town, West Ninth and and that going forward. And and maybe we come down the road, maybe our generous state will give us some more money and uh. Something might happen, you know.
Well, and I think we're all in agreement that.
Something going.
That road is in very tough shape and it gets used a lot because of the ballpark out there and it's, it's kind of almost a safety hazard when you, all the chuck holes and. I know our guys have been trying to patch it, make it work and it's tough.
Um, Jeff, I just want to throw in, um, the ballpark additions up there, you know, along seventh street.
The townhome?
Oh, the, the townhome there. I know that their road is not ours. Uh, but it's in rough shape. There, this might, when we do this road, it might be an opportunity for it, you know, maybe connect with them to say, hey, maybe. You might think about resurfacing that road. I mean, there's been a few people that have asked me, what are we going to do about the road? And I said, nothing, because we don't own it. It's your association's road.
You're talking the roads north of Line Drive.
Line Drive.
Yeah, yeah, it goes up through there.
Oh, oh, that, that one.
That's not, that's not city. I'm just, I'm making the suggestion because people have said that it's in really rough shape. And as we enter a project like this, that might be a chance to give them an estimate about when the crews are there and.
Yeah, potentially, definitely can uh. Check into them what pricing would be.
Yeah.
If the contractor is willing to, you know, extend unit prices or give them an estimate.
Right.
Would be probably the most reasonable time.
I just, I, I knew it was out there and I just wanted to put it, put it in.
That's one of two planned unit developments we have in in the city. The other one is over there by the armory.
Yep.
So there's one and there's two of them, but Brian, that's a good idea, because I also feel the calls myself and if we can help those people out at all, that's, that's great.
Yeah, getting it built up to our standards, what it would cost them and then it'll be maintained by us once it's up to our standards.
Yep.
I think that's a very wise choice to give them a, an amount and say, hey, here's what it'll take to get you included and we can do that at the same time, or here's, here's what it'll cost you.
Well, I don't know, gentlemen, if you think we're in a position to make a decision on seventh street, there's really no point that I see that we should delay it. I mean, I can throw it back. If you guys want to act on it tonight, we can, or if you want.
I think let's move forward. We pretty much are all agreeing on it and the sooner we get it, we know what we want to do and it just.
Yep.
Moves forward on the, the path of where we're going, so I will move that we proceed with just redoing the street portion of the E seven street project. And uh, continue looking at potential funding sources to possibly do some of the, the pipe work or water and sewer work underneath the street at this time, but to not include it in our plans. Moving forward. Just do the street and the surface work that we've looked at.
I agree with Jeff and I will second that.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to uh. Get that E seven street project uh, project going. Um, I'll just have a roll call vote on that, please.
Councilmember Solvi?
Yes.
Crails?
Yes.
Gallickson? Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Waller?
Yes. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you, Jeff.
Two years worth of discussions.
Giving us all that information. It's good to keep us going and.
That's a relief to have. I guess move on.
You know, you know, at the end of the day, it just comes down to being good stewards and that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, that's right.
And whatever we can do in the future, absolutely.
Yeah, thanks for all, everybody digging into this. I know we've all spent a lot of time and energy trying to figure out a, a solution and and it looks like tonight we did that, so. Um, I'm happy with that. All right, any informational items to come before the council? Hearing none.